Hi, everybody. Before we call the meeting to order, I'm going to read my script for remotely conducted city council meetings. Tonight's meeting is a committee of the whole meeting and a committee on the Committee of Finance and Property. It is June 9th, and I'm confirming member access as a preliminary matter. This is Paul Guanci, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed on BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I'm confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. This is an open meeting of the Beverly City Council. It's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspended the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does not have public participation. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. Bless you, Mr. Perry. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. Thank you, everyone. Call to order, the Committee of the Whole and Council Flaherty, would you please call to order Finance and Property?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call to order Finance and Property.
And Council Flaherty, do you have anything to add before we go right into our budgets?
Nope. I think Mr. Perry did a good job last night explaining things. I think we should go right into the department heads, and if we have questions outside of that, we can go with Mr. Perry.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. First up is Dan McPherson, our Harbor Master. And his budget is found on page 61. Mr. McPherson, do you want to give us a quick overview, and then we'll see if any of the councilors have questions?
All right, Mr. President. Everything is fairly straightforward. It's just over one page of line items. There's not a lot there, and of course, we're keeping things close to the vest with the present circumstances, but I'm happy with what we have, and I hope as a team, the City of Beverly continue to move forward.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Mr. McPherson? Well, I'll ask one. Do you still like your job? You've been doing it for a number of years now.
Yes, I do. Never a dull moment, as they say.
Great. We'll keep up the good work, Dan. We appreciate you being coming by tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President, and this is a first for me. I'm not up on this kind of technology too much, but this has been fun. Do I, I can...
You can go home.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Have a good night, guys.
You, too.
Mr. President, I think Ms. Rand has a question.
Oh, sorry. Look at that. Council Rand.
Thank you. It was more just a moment to take opportunity to thank our Harbor Master for his coordination on efforts to keep everybody safe down on the docks while fishing and boating, and also to comment that I've heard great things about your Assistant Harbor Master right now.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you as well. Stay safe, everyone.
Council Rand. Next up on the docket is Allison Babbin, our new library director. Allison, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
I want to talk about your job a bit, and then we'll see if anybody has any questions. Your first budget.
Sure. Yes, my first budget. So, good evening, councilors. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Allison Babbin, and I am the new director. I have been with the library for about nine and a half years, most recently serving as the Assistant Director for the past three. The mission of the library is to provide services, programs, and materials that enrich people's lives, foster a love of reading, and provide access to information, and that is certainly not changed by the pandemic. Since our library buildings have closed to the public on March 14th, we have offered 78, I'm sorry, 78 virtual programs ranging from Storytime, STEAM workshops, cookbook clubs, book discussion groups, laugh breaks, our English practice group, and many more. We have filmed tutorials on how to make cloth face coverings and created a resource page for reliable information about the coronavirus. We have found a way to issue library cards electronically, so people can get a library card right from their home, and we have been helping many residents access the wide collection we have of eBooks and digital audiobooks, and our usage of those resources have soared. We have transitioned our monthly art exhibits into the virtual space, so we are now hosting those on the library's website. We collaborated with public school librarians to launch Beverly Keeps Reading, a citywide challenge, encouraging residents to read a collective goal of 5,000 books. I could go on and on. The buildings are closed, but we are still serving the public, and with that in mind, I also wanted to mention that historically, in tough economic times, the library often becomes more important than ever. As people look to those free resources, they come to the library to get help finding jobs, and they look for books just for a source of comfort and escape. So I think in the days to come will be needed more than ever. I did also want to mention that we are launching our version of curbside pickup next week. We're calling it front door service, and our first day is already fully booked with people that are eager to get their hands back on print materials.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Council Feldman has a question for you.
Yes, Council Feldman. Hi. Thank you so much, and welcome. Welcome to Beverly. Congratulations on your job. I was asking, and it might, it's probably not actually a question for you so much as it's a general question for maybe any other jury here in that notice the one line item is for line item 16103, or actually, no, 16, yeah, for the long range preservation of historically important documents.
Yeah.
And books and letters is up 233%. So I know all about this type of how important this work is. I was wondering if, I know that the clerks, the City, the Clerk's Office had...
I think Council Feldman has frozen for me.
I think I might have...
Hey, everyone.
What was that?
You froze up. We couldn't hear the last thing that you said, Kathleen.
Okay. Okay. So, real fast, I just know that we had decreased the City Clerk's Office budget on a very similar project by 100%. We paused the preservation of certain documents, and I was wondering if there was any way we were looking into like a consolidation of those two projects for that line item.
I don't know that I can speak to that, but Mr. Ailes can probably help me with this. I'm not sure why it says that the 2019 budget was zero, because I thought that there has been $1,000 in that line historically, but I may not know.
Mr. Ailes?
It does typically get, yes, thank you, Mr. President. It does typically get funded at the $1,000 level. This is an item that historically, year over year, gets funded at $1,000. You can see that in FY, well, first FY19, of that $1,000, no funds were expended. And in FY20, although the budget started at $1,000... Somewhere mid-year, there was a transfer out, leaving only $300, and that's why when we put it back to $1,000, that it shows that large of a percentage increase. However, it's still only budgeted at the $1,000.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Council Feldman, does that help at all?
It does. I just was wondering if there's overlap between the two projects in consolidation, if we could keep the City, the Clerk's Office project going, but...
Mr. Ailes doesn't appear to be.
If I may, just to comment on that, yeah. I think amongst all of our departments...
Are you able to hear me okay? No? No? No. Yeah, you're okay right now.
I was just going to say that among all our departments, there's a number of documents in every department which historically have been kind of the ownership of that department. So over time, departments have initiated the project of preserving those documents, my office included. We have old tax records and old assessment records that date back to the 1700s that have been restored. So I think it warrants a discussion among all of our departments to really see what is important to preserve indefinitely for, you know, generations to come. It's a great point, Council.
Thank you. Council Hausmann, please.
Yeah, just to follow up briefly, I mean, the conversation we had last night regarding the Clerk's Office and their documents like this suggests that maybe when we're looking at the various different departments and the budgets used to preserve historic documents, that that could be something that could be looked at for coordination with the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, for funding on historic, I forget exactly the name of the, you know, historical preservation. So maybe there's a way to achieve some synergy amongst, you know, library, City Clerks, Finance, any of the departments that have it in terms of getting funding for, you know, preservation of historical documents.
Thank you, Council Hausmann. Council Flowers.
Thank you. Well, first of all, congratulations. I'll echo Council Feldman. Congratulations on your new position, although I know you've been with the library for a while, and we appreciate that. I just, I had two questions, actually, and they're both sort of updates, I guess. I know a project that you all have been engaged in for some time was working on the teen room and upgrading the teen room, and I know that was something that we heard a lot about at the last budget cycle, and I wondered if you wanted to update us at all on where that project stands and what, how you're feeling about it. I know you can't have people in the building right now, and my other, I'll just give you both, and then you can answer. My other question was, I know you're starting curbside pickup. I didn't know if you had any insight or thoughts about when and how the Bookmobile might be usable to you or back in action, and if that's, I assume that's been limited by COVID, too, but I'd love to hear about both of those initiatives that you all have going.
Sure. I'm happy to answer both of those questions.
Thank you.
Yes. Regarding the teen room renovation, we have made really good progress on that. We have installed all-new carpeting in the teen room, which looks beautiful, and it has been repainted. And we have also acquired a few new pieces for it, a nice, modern, new magnetic bulletin-type board and a new book display item, and we were just about to get started on ordering furniture when the virus shutdown happened. So that piece of it is on pause for now, and that seems fine since people can't come in the building right now anyways, and we are very fortunate to have the dedicated support of the Friends of the Library who are funding the project, and they are holding those funds in reserve for the project. So we'll be able to pick that up again when the time is right. Regarding the front door service and the Bookmobile's role, that's a great question. The tricky part with the Bookmobile is people come onto the Bookmobile, and it is a very tight, confined space, and we've already had a visit to talk about putting a plexiglass shield in to protect the driver, but that work hasn't happened yet, and it might need some additional, you know, accommodations made to it to make it safe, but I think soon that will be a really important part of reopening. And I did want to mention that the Bookmobile driver has already been delivering items. She delivered items to 71 homes just last week. So she, even though she's not using the Bookmobile itself, she's still out on the road getting materials to folks, so we're not forgetting about them.
That is dedication.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, and thank you for what you and your team do. I always feel very lucky to have the library that we do in Beverly. It matters in a community, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Flowers.
Thank you, Council. Council Rand.
Thank you, President Guanci. Thank you for being here with us tonight. I actually wanted to ask a question about just maybe future budgets and wondering your thoughts about how you pointed out in your introduction how you do serve the community in so many ways, and especially in an economic downturn. But have you kind of thought about ways that you might need further support from the city and your budget to meet the needs of some of the people in your, who come to the library who are homeless? Like, are you, I've heard of some innovative programs in other libraries. I have, I don't have any kind of experience in establishing innovative programs in libraries, obviously.
Yeah, that's a great question.
But I'm wondering if you have some thoughts about that for future budgets, because you do serve so many populations that, our entire city, that I'm wondering what you need to continue to meet the needs.
Yeah, that's a great question, and that's an issue that I personally care about a lot as well, and something I definitely want to devote more thought to. I had been thinking previously about what type of programming we might do, but that sort of, everything has changed with the new situation. That said, I did have the opportunity to speak about potential uses for CARES funding at the library, and one of the possible uses would be adding to some of our easily accessible technology, perhaps a self-checkout tablet station, so people will be able to check out tablets and use them throughout the building and be able to space, you know, space themselves apart from others easily. And if we were able to get that funding, we would have a long-term benefit from adding something like that, that would benefit everyone, especially people who don't have devices like that at home. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Rimes.
Thank you, and congratulations, and that was a great question, Council Rand, and I just want to follow up on that, that I know many of the homeless people that I know really count on, have counted on the library, and it's been just a painful situation for them not to have access to shelter during the day, not to have access to a restroom during the day. So whatever programming that you do, visualize whether it's just outside or even as you think about maybe opening up, just know that I, for one, am a very supportive counselor in terms of whatever innovative thinking that you have on, you know, regarding this.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Council Rimes. Anybody else with questions or comments or well wishes? Well, Allison, thank you so much for coming by tonight.
Thank you.
We wish you well this year. It's been what about, how long? Has it been six or eight months?
No, it was quite a long interview process, but no, it's only been about a month and a half in the new role.
Okay. Well, great. We wish you the best, and know that the City Council is here to support you and help you in any way we can.
Thank you very much.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
Mary Ann Holak, the Director of the Council on Aging. How are you, Mary Ann?
I'm good. Can you hear me?
Your budget for the City Council is on page 92. Starts on 92 and it goes to page 94, right before the library one. Mary Ann, you want to talk about your department a little bit before we go to questions?
Sure. I would like to say that our mission statement says that we are to create a friendly and safe community for Beverly seniors, and during this time of the pandemic, it, the definition of community for us has gone way beyond the walls of the senior center. And I think you all know that I'm a happy person when this building is filled with 200 people, so I was not very happy that we had to close down, but I also very concerned about the people that we saw every day going home and not having a resource and not having enough to do. And so we've done a really great job, I think, of reaching out to those people through robo calls, through one-on-one calls. We've become a real connector of people and services in the community, and I think just we started out a grab-and-go lunch program with senior care, and the first week we had 15 people participate, but this week we had 70 people participate. So we're seeing over time that more people are learning about the program, but also are needing to have a place to go to grab a healthy meal. So I feel really great that we've been able to branch out into the community and reach out to people who are indeed at home, who are used to being in this building, being active and social and independent. And here we are, you know, encouraging independence, and we've sent all these independent people back to their homes to wait out this pandemic, and it's been tough, it's been tough for all of us, but I think we have pivoted enough. We have some of our most popular exercise classes being shown every day on BevCam. We have YouTube channels, so we're showing some old Live in the Good Life shows on that channel, and we're using Facebook Live for our yoga class and some presentations by some of our community partners. So that's what we've been doing during the pandemic, and I've been really active with my Council on Aging counterparts and other communities, talking about some best practices and trying to figure out what would be a plan to have an opening at some point. My friend in TBD said, "I have 400 people in my building every day. I'm not going to open the building if I'm only allowed to have 10 people in the building, because I have, I'll have to tell 390 people that they can't come in." So we kind of had that dilemma as well. Our program space is beautiful, but it's not a great space for social distancing, and besides, when people come into the senior center, they're here for social interaction. So I think we have to wait it out a little bit longer to see how things develop in Phase 2 and then in Phase 3. And in the meantime, Eastern Bank called me and said they wanted to make a donation, and I thought it might be $500, and when they told me it was $10,000, I almost fell off the chair. We're really looking at this for two things, and one is to get the staff out of the building this summer and do curbside visits. And the front portrait project that we've seen around through Erin Powers was so popular that we thought it would be great to take pictures of the seniors in their home setting at their front door, and then we're hoping to get some high school students who will do an oral history with the seniors that we visit and take pictures of, and in the end, hopefully have a book or a display of the lives of Beverly seniors during the time of the pandemic. So we're really excited about that, and I'll have different staff people going out different days, and, you know, we'll do the social distancing, but we'll actually get out of our building and go see some of our seniors that we miss so much. So I think that's all.
That's great, Mary Ann, and that social interaction of your guests that you see every day is just so important to them, and the fact that you and your staff are taking that time to get out and see people, and you want to do more of it is just amazing, because you do just have a pretty small staff.
I have a...
A couple of questions from members of the council. I have Council Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Am I being heard okay?
Yes, you are tonight.
Okay. Ms. Holak, I know we had a conversation earlier on with COVID-19 about the senior population and kind of just reaching out, and I know you took the initiative and immediately started doing. How is that going still, even though, I know you have plans going forward, but as the duration keeps going, obviously there's some people that we may not catch immediately that would necessarily not go to the center at all or have been perfectly fine, but, you know, still have that fear of going out. Are we still trying to reach out to some of these people? Are we able to reach out and reach these people?
We have a group of people who have asked us to call them every week, so we do have some staff members who are making phone calls to people who want to be called on a weekly basis. I am counting heavily on the neighbors to let us know if they have a concern about one of their, one of their older neighbors, because we, I worry about the safety net as well, and when people are isolated themselves in their homes, then it is tougher to know. We have kept a list of low, medium, and high-risk people in the community, and the high-risk people are getting called frequently. The low-risk people, we're just checking in with once in a while, and, you know, just the other day, we had a phone call from a car dealership worried about a senior in Beverly who had lost her keys three times and had wanted to pay $300 each time, and I guess they took her money two of the times, but the last time she came in, they wouldn't take her money. So here's a senior who's isolated, who seems to be having some memory issues, and they called us. So we, you know, we asked them to call Protective Services, and then we reached out to the woman who's been actually very open and talking about, you know, what's going on in her life. So again, I rely on the community at large to let me know. We have another, we had another situation earlier with Council Flowers, and I spoke at length about, about somebody who was discharged to a friend from a nursing home, and within three hours, he was admitted to Beverly Hospital as a presumptive COVID case. And so when I think about the community at large, I also think that we shouldn't forget that we want really high-quality nursing homes in our community, and what happened in the nursing homes all over the state and really all over the country should not be ever be allowed to happen again. There should be higher standards, and I mean, there's not one senior I know who wants to go live in a nursing home, and now we have Exhibit A as to why they don't want to be there. The quality of care is at a minimum level. That's all they need to do is provide a minimum level of care to get their license to be a nursing home provider. And, you know, I lived through it with my mother, so I'm a little bit more passionate than I was before I lived through that with my mom, but it's something that I think as a community, we should, we should insist of these businesses that are private businesses running nursing homes, that they do a better job and be better prepared for something like this. That probably was too long of an answer for your question, but certainly reaching out, I talk to Sue Carlton from Beverly Housing every few weeks to see how they're doing over there, and we're really just trying to touch all the bases that we can.
That was perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate the update.
Thank you, Council Rotundo. Council Hausmann?
Yes. Good evening, Mary Ann. I just want to compliment and congratulate you on your, your passion, your commitment in your creativity in delivering the services that fulfill the mission of the, you know, of your department. I'm impressed every year about all three of those, your passion, your commitment, and your creativity. So following up on a budgetary item, I have a question related to the, so on the last page, there are three items where there are decreases that I would like either you or Mr. Ailes to address if you could. One has to do with nearly 10% decrease in heating fuel for the budget, and the other two seem to be related. They're both vehicle-related. One's a 28% decrease, the other's a 24% decrease related to vehicle maintenance and so forth. So perhaps a new vehicle has been purchased, and that's decreasing the maintenance cost, but if you could speak to those two things, the heating fuel change and the vehicle change, I'd appreciate it.
Well, we do have, two of our buses that are on the road are fairly new. One's a 2000... 2019 and one's a 2017. But I think when we built this budget, we were also thinking we may not have transportation services on the road in the early part of the new fiscal year, the way that it has always been. We felt okay with cutting the fuel costs. Plus, I haven't really been paying attention because I haven't need to fill my tank very frequently, but the price of gas had gone down as well. And that may not stay, and that may have already gone back up. And so vehicle maintenance and vehicle fuel, I think we felt okay with making those cuts this year. I don't really remember why the building, Bryant, because we do have a building, and certainly the Board of Health right now is in our building, and so are my staff. So hopefully, there'll be people here also building.
Yeah, I can add a little bit about the heating fuel line, because I remember the conversation internally, looking back on historical actual expenditures. This was one of those lines that historically had been budgeted just a bit higher than was actually spent year over year. So we brought it down to what a historical expenditure level was, and that's the reduction.
Okay, thank you very much.
I want to say thank you for your support. I do have a passion and a commitment to this work. And even though my master's degree is in Recreation Administration, I think I'm a social worker at heart. Graduate degree, so.
Thank you very much. Counselor Rand?
Thank you. And Ms. Holak, thank you so much for keeping our elder citizens connected as best as they can be through this pandemic. You've done a great job and rallied people and volunteers and all of that, used all of your resources. So thank you. I just had one question about the vacant Transportation Coordinator position. I know that that's been vacant for some time now. I'm wondering if, as a result of maybe not running the buses, as you said, as frequently, are you going to leave that open? Is the position posted? And what is the potential for training? And as I think I've shared with you before, I think it's a great opportunity to just increase the diversity in our city hiring.
Well, that has been a very tough position to fill because the person that we hire has to have a commercial driver's license with passenger endorsement. And I don't know if our particular school department was struggling, but I think they were, that every place, you couldn't hire a bus driver, let alone somebody who could coordinate the schedules and the routes and be the dispatcher as well. And so we interviewed a few people. I actually offered someone a job, and he used my offer to go back to his current employer and get a better salary from them. I wasn't too happy with that, but it happened. Actually, I've had Bill Burke, who was the Transportation Coordinator for the Beverly Public Schools for many years, coming in as a temp. He's a retiree, so is allowed to work a certain number of hours in a year. But he had been working as our Transportation Coordinator 28 hours a week, I think since, maybe February? Oh, no, actually, since the fall. So he will be able to come back once we get the buses up and running on the road for at least a short period of time. And Bryant and I were just talking about this, that with the unemployment rate in the state being so high, there may be a possibility to hire somebody who has been laid off from their job. I certainly don't think that's going to happen in July, and it probably is not going to happen in August. So there probably will be a savings there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Counselor Flowers, did you have something else, or you're good? You're all set?
I actually had a similar question to Counselor Rand, so I'm all set.
Please, you're all set, okay.
I appreciate the answer, Ms. Holak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Holak, thank you so much for being here. Always a pleasure to talk to you. You know to reach out if we can be of any assistance throughout the year. And keep up the good work, please.
And before I go, I would like to say that I do have an Enterprise Fund budget, if you want to look at that right now.
Mr. Ailes, do you mind that?
Not at all. It probably makes sense.
It's on page 148.
Page 148. And it's a small budget.
Basically, almost cut it in half this year because, you know, it hasn't been announced publicly, but of course, now it will be. We're not going to be able to hold a Senior Day in the Park with 500 or 600 people under a tent this year because of all of the precautions that we want to take with our older adults. And also, the sponsors for that event are mostly healthcare providers, and they've been hit really hard with their expenses during this period. So it makes sense. We're trying to figure out how to do Senior of the Year without Lynch Park as a venue. And we're also trying to figure out if we can continue the Brad Gage Ice Cream Social with the help of Rotary and Kerry Hill, maybe giving out gift cards for ice creams. So we're working on a couple of hopefully fun things for homecoming. But we certainly cut down our expenditures for things like Senior Day in the Park, knowing that cost and our expenses cross over two budget years. Right now, we probably would have already raised, you know, within sponsorship money, at least $5,000 or $6,000. That would be in this fiscal year, but the event doesn't happen until next fiscal year. We did put a placeholder in there for our Senior Soiree, which is our annual dinner dance in January. We don't know if we'll be able to hold that or not, but we did want to at least budget for it. And, you know, in this budget also are all those casino trips that people love. I think Counselor Guante, you as well, are waiting to go on those.
I've four of them, yes.
All right. And so we have, we planned that we never do them in the winter. So we did budget for three of them for next April, May, and June. So we really just ratcheted it all down, knowing that our revenue and our expenses would be lower in this coming year because of COVID.
Mary Ann, you will be giving out a Senior of the Year award somehow?
Yeah, trying to figure out how to do that right now. And so, yes, I'm very optimistic that there will be a Senior of the Year this year, even if it's in that person or person's front yard at their home. Thank you.
Any other questions, team? Okay, Mary Ann, thank you for reminding us about your enterprise budget.
You're welcome. That was actually Bryant. I didn't know. Thank you.
All right, we'll see you soon. Now we are on to Chief LaLasher. Chief of the Beverly Police Department is here to talk about the police department budget. He's joined by Captain Richard Russo also.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, always I enjoy coming in front of the council and being able to say that I'm very proud of the men and women of the department and the very, very strong work that they do every day. We're going to continue our community policing efforts. You know, we've done a lot in the last few years with our CIU unit, our jail diversion. Person is Lisa does an absolutely incredible job and has been able to do things we haven't been able to do in the past. And Cindy Byer, as our Domestic Violence Coordinator, does absolutely fantastic work. But again, I always want to thank the men and women of the department for the job they do daily. Obviously, we've had a lot on our plate since March with COVID-19, extra patrols, extra working with the Health Department, doing compliance checks, doing, you know, social distancing patrols, and trying to get the city safe and keep the streets open. And I'm very proud of the work that we've done.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief LaLasher?
Mr. President, I have one other thing, if I may, before I go. I pause for a second. I just want to also address the current state of affairs. You know, the Beverly Police Department is very committed to our communities, obviously working with all of our communities, but in particular with our community of color. The men and women, everybody I've talked to is appalled by the situation that happened in Minneapolis. I came out and said that immediately. Every officer I've talked to has said the exact same thing. And we're going to strive to make sure that we continue the very solid community efforts we have here. And I think we do a great job, and we're going to do a better job.
Great, thank you, Chief. Counselor Rotundo, first up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, just a few questions. I know you and I have had discussions in the past. I saw the reserve budget take a huge jump, which to me, I think is a positive jump, seeing that you're possibly looking to fill that, get some more reserves. Is that what the budget's for there? I know the other thing was Jerry Perry has made in past mention with the, you know, the overtime budget sometimes going a little high, back and forth. Do you feel with the COVID virus right now that it may potentially affect some retirees and things like that? I mean, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but, you know, I know there was a couple of talks of possibly, you know, not dealing with this, of being afraid of the virus and everything like that, they may take that retirement if they're able to. So I know there's always that long-term, that you can't really predict, but is there something in place in that case? So they're kind of all in the same category, the reserves line item going up, and then the overtime.
Well, it's all intermingled. So right now, we're down to five reserves. We're in the process of hiring more reserves. When COVID-19 hit, it stopped the process. So hopefully, we can increase our reserve force. Because what that does, it takes the burden off of the full-time officers during, you know, vacation time, during summertime, so they can get needed time off to be with their families. So that pays for a lot of different things, the training, different aspects of that. And what happens is those offices all have to go to a part-time academy, a reserve intermittent academy, and that takes a considerable amount of time because it's part-time school. So right now, I actually have two full-time offices in the academy. One was scheduled to graduate already, but because of COVID, they got sent home. And the other one was delayed from April to just going in in June because of what's going on. So we're two down, as far as two in the academy. And I did have one retire back in April. One of my senior patrolmen retired. So that puts more stress on the force. And I also have officers out injured, two out injured right now. So again, that's significant reductions to the basic workforce. And, you know, the mayor and I had worked very hard on looking forward to increasing the actual amount of patrolmen in the city to make up some of those differences, to add more community-impact units, to work in different specialties. I work closely with the citizens, and because of COVID-19, now we've had to kind of push that back and not do any new hiring. But always, I have offices in the academy, offices out injured, and we are always at the bare minimum. A lot of times, we have to order offices. Now, orders are down significantly. But sometimes we have to order offices, and that gets tough. I mean, you work an eight-hour shift, you're planning on going home, you have maybe plans the next day, and you order to stay another eight hours because we have to have police officers in the streets. We have to have people out there 24 hours a day. And that's where the reserve officers really help us out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. Counselor Feldman?
Yes, thank you. I had two questions. One was, the first was pretty straightforward. I was just wondering what the, if it was a new hire online on the principal on the first page that was up 76.1%. Was that a new hire, or was that a position that was only filled for part of the year?
So what, you know, what had happened is one of my records clerks had retired. And then, I'm sorry, I'll take it back. I guess I'm a little overtired from March 13th onward. My long, long time, the city's long, long time principal, the chief's confidential secretary, Helen Bluzey, retired. And after Helen, she'd been out for a later time and then retired. And then I brought on a new administrative assistant, and then people came in to different positions. And then there was a time of the year that that position emptied, and finally, we are full staff. So we've only always had a confidential secretary, a supervisor does payroll, and then oversees the records bureau, and then two records clerks.
Gotcha. Okay, just checking. And then my other question was on the third page, a listing for training. And I know we've discussed, you have talked, we've heard about the current state of affairs and different types of training that could be part of police programs. It lists mandatory training under there, and the mandatory training is firearms, first responder, CPR, and policy. And I believe we've discussed before that you do do other trainings. And I was wondering if those were part of that line item, or if they're listed somewhere else?
So that, when we say mandatory training, some of it is set by contract, and some of it is set by state rule. So even though, there's quite a bit more things we do every year than listed on there, we just don't have space. And then there's other trainings we do. But the basic things we have to do are firearms, first aid, CPR, and then we do additional self-defense trainings, de-escalation trainings, whether they be simunitions, scenario training, active shooter, taser, patrol rifle. Those are the other things that we do, either contractually or by state mandate. Because any time we add a piece of equipment to the department, you have to be certified in that use. You just can't take a certified on it. So that all continues for that. But we also have 911 training. We have ongoing, you know, training for each officer in different fields every year that come up, so that we can keep our continuing efforts going forward towards different items. MPTC, the agency that oversees police training, they change the mandatory trainings each year. They're the ones that set the mandatory trainings as far as going in service to 24-hour in-service outside the department. Those are set by the state, and those change every year. Over the past few years, there's been a lot on mental health training, suicide prevention. There was implicit bias training, all kinds of different things that have come up in the last couple of years. Captain Russo is a very good experience, or a lot of background with the training budget. Because when I came on as chief in 2013, he was a training sergeant, and has worked that position up through the rank of captain. He has a much better grasp of that if he has specific questions on training also.
I think that's a helpful, that's a helpful start. I was just wondering what was beyond mandatory, because I know that you do have other trainings that you participate in. So I would, I would actually love, maybe we can offline, I could get a list of like what the different types are better understand type of training.
We do some health and wellness training, juvenile law, legal law updates. We've been training with the fire department to do some different active shooter training with them as well. There's a lot of things that come up every year. Again, we have drug recognition experts to deal with the heroin crisis. We have EMTs that have to get extra trained to maintain their certification. So there's also a lot of individual officer training. The sexual assault investigators have to have, you know, specific training. So not everybody may get that, but offices that have specialties receive specialized training.
Thank you, Counselor Feldman. Counselor Fard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few questions. One is about civil dispatch. How, we are looking at doing that this year in the present facilities. Does that make sense, or should we wait for the new facility to dispatch?
Well, there's a lot of moving parts to that. And the mayor and I, and Solicitor's office, and the unions have been working on a few different things. We're moving forward to try to see if we can get this going as soon as we can. You know, there are, there are some, there's two, there's two aspects of it. We had purchased new console equipment, which is being installed now because the old consoles, I think were made in like 1981, and weren't free of them collapsing. So we're going to get those online now. The company Belltronic is actually doing the install. But we feel that if we, if we get to the point we can have civilians hired and put in place, that what that's going to do is take police officers and put them back on the street. Now, the way that the construction is going now, and I, you know, I know we're on schedule, very close to schedule. You know, we're looking at moving in in a year, you know, in say, July or August of '21. Hopefully, it'll all come together by then.
And can you talk about accreditation, how important accreditation, you know, with our current facility, accreditation doesn't always serve us well, and how important that is, not only for accreditation, but for training purposes, and what you'll be able to do in that new facility that will help out the men and women of the police department?
No, absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up. So accreditation was something that we've been No, absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up. So accreditation was something that we've been looking for, for years and getting involved in the program. The, the city is already involved in what's called self-assessment. So what we're doing is we've taken the policies from the Massachusetts Accreditation Committee, and we're building our own. So in other words, what specifically fits Beverly as far as how many offices we have, the equipment we use, and things to that effect. And a lot of it is set by the, by the state board. It's not a state-run board. It's, it's a, it's kind of a bunch of communities that have all agreed how this process works and is one standard. There's a national standard called, called CLIA, which is basically the mass accreditation standards that are built off of the CLIA standards. And there are very specific things you have to do. If you have a police station, you have to have, you know, a booking facility that has certain things in it and safety factors, and the way that you bring prisoners in, the way you secure weapons, the way you store your evidence. That all, that all comes under accreditation. Not only just the way we have to do reporting on how we investigate cases, but all, all the processes involved in law enforcement are hit by accreditation. So there's a lot of things right now, as, as I've said over the years, with the current police station, we just can't do. We don't have a solid foundation. Our cell block fails inspection every time the Commonwealth comes and inspects it. We don't have hot water. We have semi-warm water now on, on the third floor, but there's no hot water in the building. There's no hot, the water doesn't get hot enough in the cell block to pass accreditation. So those are the things right now in the current building, which we know is, is ending, and we don't have to worry about that. But those are the things when accreditation come up, they'll help us in the future. But also, there's a standard of training and accreditation that we'll maintain and be able to do different things. One of the things that we're building with the building is a firearm simulator, which does a lot of different things. You can, you can do proficiency training in it. You can also just simmunitions, not simmunitions, but situational training. The computer puts through many different scenarios and interact with the computer. It's, it's absolutely unbelievable training. It's as real as it can possibly be. But also having the community room that we're, we're putting on the front, which we can hold meetings in and have groups in and all that. We can also offer trainings to other police departments, and we can actually charge other police departments to come to Beverly and train and take that money and put it back into our budget. So the new facility is going to allow us to do a lot of things that we can't do right now.
Thank you. And I just want to put a statement out there too about the mayor and the police chief about doing the review of the police department. I think it's a great idea to do, but I also think it's not necessarily on the, on the Beverly Police Department, but also we should be doing that on a yearly basis or a bi-yearly basis. The, the speed department, the five comment, it's always a good idea to review. But, you know, I want to say, and I go, you okay?
Okay, now, yeah.
The, I think I want to say that the men and women of the Beverly Police Department, there was a few things that were very, very, um, I know that
On a list of things to do, and I've got to touch base with their regional membership representative because by becoming members, we'll be able to access that curriculum. I think it's an important one for us as as city leaders to to try to access and go through. So I'll I'll be reaching out to the council to let you know what I'm able to find when we when we do sign up there. And the good thing is that membership for our community is only $4,000 a year. So we've got a little bit of money remaining in the executive budget right now. We'll we'll sign up before June 30. And that'll be something that I believe we'll all be able to take advantage of and will benefit us all and benefit the community. So thanks.
Thank you, Your Honor. Great words. We have Council Freydees.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to publicly thank the chief and his force. I think what's going on, you know, I'm just an observer like everyone else, that once one class of individuals feels superior or better or separated from another class, that's when these issues happen, whether it's racism, ethnic, you know, feminist stuff, whatever it may be. But getting back this, so what I'm trying to say is that we have to watch the police, the fire, those who deliver services if they're separated from our community. This force, I have three examples. One is my son was very sick, as everyone knows, and over the last nine years, we probably had to call 911 at least a dozen times, maybe more. The professionalism, the service, the incredible promptness, the way they made us feel during a life and death situation was remarkable. And this is from a family that for 54 years, we never even heard of anyone who ever used 911. And we were a frequent flyer. So I can't thank them enough for their professionalism and their service. Then for Pete's final services and the way they sent us him off. Now, granted, he was a unique individual. He was a national and international known figure activist in the ALS world. But the way the chief and his force, I can never thank you enough, Chief. I want to publicly say it. It's been remarkable. So talk about community. But then again, Pete was special. He was unique. I just want to bring up a third component. And this is during the beginning of the pandemic. And this is from one of your officers. You don't even know this. So I'm just a guy who picks up his grandkids every day at the COG school. I'm in my sweatpants, and it's the highlight of the day. I'm in my jeans. But there's a guy who is down there. He probably doesn't even know I'm a counselor. So he holds court all the time with all the family members, all the parents, all the grandparents. And he takes everybody's number because he wants to know that he's out there to provide service. So I've got the guy Peter from the liquor store who says, I'm in the neighborhood. I can drop something off. I've got Craig from Fibbers who says, I just cooked some wings. I can drop it off. Mike from Henry's. But here's a quote, just wanted to reach out and say hello. Hope you and the family are healthy and well. If you need anything, I'm always out there. Officer Jay. So again, a guy who's providing service to the community, he took it upon his initiative to do this. And I'm just very grateful to be a member of this community. And Chief, in your force, I'm forever eternally grateful for what you've done for us and our family. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Freydees. We have Council Hausmann now.
Yeah, I just want to, I think much of what I want to ask and what I wanted to say has already been said, both in terms of the good work that the police department already does, and also in terms of the commitment going forward to be engaged more in the ongoing training around racism and the issues related to it. So I'll keep my comments short and end it at that. Thank you.
Council Hausmann. Council Rand.
Sorry about that. I thought Council Hausmann would would talk a little longer.
Much longer. Don't provoke him. He'll come back.
And always has good things to say. And I have a very boring budget question, and which is basically focused on page 52, maybe specifically about lines 54263 and 54266, where it just shows that there are a lot of cuts made on this page. Specifically, those light items are for repair of equipment and replacement of weaponry. I'm just wondering, is that a product of of kind of cutting down to what we usually, what your department usually turns back?
No. So there's a lot of factors there. And this is where it kind of gets a little confusing. So in the last few years, if you remember, we began to buy purchased patrol rifles for every officer. We were able to take money out of our 911 money that we get from the state and transfer it into the firearms line and purchase some item. We also purchased brand new Level 4 vests for the cruisers and helmets, again, for potential active shooter situations. And those, that's why those lines went up dramatically, say, in those years, and we're back down to what we think is a regular year, where we have to buy replacement parts, you know, things break, weapons break, springs break, magazines break. And then also, the way our tasers work, we purchase a taser, they're approximately $1,000 each, and then we pay $150 a year for the next five years as a maintenance and warranty cost. And at the end of that five year period, they just give us a brand new taser. We give it back, and we continue the 150 year program. So by able to do that, when I first got here in 2013, we had four or five tasers. We now have 25. And we're actually getting an additional five at a cut rate because another department in the Commonwealth is going to a different model, and we use the model that they have. So we're getting five brand new in the box tasers for half price. So that's where that that money goes. It's specifically in that line. We did, if you're looking at also vehicles, we made a tactical decision based on where we are at the fleet now and mileage, that we could go to, we always usually get three vehicles a year. We do our rotation out. So the six line cars, the original, the six patrol cars that are normally on the street, three of those get replaced every year. Those cars then go down to detectives, go down to the school resource offices, go down to the traffic offices, and we rotate them down because they're not running 24 hours a day. They last longer. What we're hoping to do is because of the position we're in is to buy two cars, keep our maintenance up. We actually just initiated an idling policy recently. They'll hopefully take some hours off the engines. Also makes the city a little greener. And by doing that, we're hoping to get through the fiscal year with the two vehicles and then look towards what we may have to do in in the next two fiscal years if we do have severe maintenance issues. Because right now, Captain Nusa brought this up to me earlier, and it's pretty fundamental. Our frontline cars are pretty much anything that happens warranty work because because they're new, and they're under that threshold. So most of the work that's done is warranty work. So there's no maintenance costs. Once we get into the cars, the spares and kick them down as we start having maintenance costs.
If I can add too, when you see the equipment repair line, that's actually for medical equipment. And we boosted that up a little bit. We spent a little more over the last couple of years because we're replacing and adding AEDs, the defibrillators, and because we're using them a lot in lifesaving situations. And we're trying to ensure that every single cruiser has one so that anyone can respond with that critical piece of equipment. And we want to make sure they're fully functional. So that, it says equipment repair, that's an old description, but it's really all our medical equipment. And that includes everything else that we use as well.
Mr. President, could I add to that?
Of course, Your Honor.
Thanks. I do want to say that we believe that best practice is to purchase three vehicles a year. You know, we only, we only have two in there because of the need to trim the budget wherever we can. As the year goes, if things trend in the right direction economically during the course of the year, I think this will be one of the first things we try to restore. So just know that that's that's our thinking going in. One other point I want to make is that we keep tracking the the evolution of electric vehicles. And the second there's a pursuit vehicle that is that is well enough made and can do the job, that's an EV, we'll start, we'll start transitioning our patrol units to EVs. Just we can't, we can't, we can't be ahead of that curve if it's not going to provide the the service we need. But but we are tracking that on a regular basis. Thanks.
Your Honor. Council Ames.
Thank you. And thank you, Chief and Captain, for being here. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I feel as if we sit right now in a really interesting time in history. I think all of us on the screen, as leaders, have an incredible opportunity to make lasting change for our community. I can tell you, I had a bit of a crazy morning this morning. But I have a neighbor who's, she and her children are hungry. And so I went over to the high school to pick up some lunches, and I was there early. So I ran across one of your officers, and I said, when does this pickup start? And he said, oh, 10:30, which was close to an hour away. And he said, where does she live? I'll take it to her. And I thought, yeah. And I thought, your team deserves to know that at this point in history, I think we're all on the same page. I really do believe that, you know, Max Boot put a beautiful editorial in the Washington Post, and he said, facts are stubborn things, John Adams said, and these have fundamentally altered public perceptions of the police. In 2014, only 43% of those surveyed described high profile police killings as indicative of a broader of broader problems with policing. And now, according to a new Washington Post Shar School poll, 69% think so. And so I think that we're all, if you believe in continuous improvement, and I think we all do here, I think this is a unique opportunity for the police department and the community to come closer together with great leadership. And I just want to say to you that I hope that that I hope that you and the mayor and your team understand that amazing power, and that I will be one who will be extremely supportive of taking as deep a dive as you want to look to looking at any constructive idea and supporting it. Because I think we're now in a time where we are on the same page, and that you do so many things well. Your team deserves the support that they they so richly deserve. And I just think it's an important thing to be said right now, because I cannot remember a time when a little city councillor could have so much impact on such a big issue in America. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. And I guess what I can say is, what you describe as how we act, and we've acted, you know, and I'm very proud of the men in the department. And I think that we have an extremely strong relationship with all of our communities. But I think we're going to do better. I think we're going to, there are always improvements to be made. And we've all talked in the station, and we're going to do whatever we can to, you know, make sure we continue to move in the in the right direction.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else before we let the chief off the hook tonight? Chief, thank you so much. Great questions. I appreciate it.
I think the last time we did this was Bruins playoffs, and I was looking at the clock and, you know, I'm not so concerned about clocks anymore.
Well, there's a golf tournament on the Golf Channel from 2015, if you're interested. Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you. Good night. We have Chief Carter from the Fire Department is up next, and the chief's budget is on page, Fire is on page 53 to 58. Chief Carter, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Always good to see you, sir.
Good to see all of you tonight. I just want to say that the pandemic has been very challenging for the Fire Department and our fire dispatches, as it has for the whole community. And we've had to change how we respond to every call because of this to protect the community and ourselves. And I'm just really proud of the Fire Department and the job they've done and how they've risen to this challenge.
Any questions for the chief? Pretty straightforward budget. It's a lot of good salaries. Council Flaherty.
Yes, a quick question about maintenance. Mr. Morris, I believe has retired or is retiring, and has done a great job for many years. But I see that position is moving over to the DPW. I want to be thoughtful on that. Is that for more efficiencies?
Well, Jeff Morris did a fantastic job. And when he retired, we've been looking at it for a while to get it over to DPW because, you know, they have a lot more mechanics. And Jack was a one man show, and it was a lot for him to do. Now with DPW, they're able to, you know, put more than one mechanic on a job at a time, and they do a lot more. They have a shop that they can do a lot more things that we would have to send the trucks out for. So in the future, it's definitely going to be, you know, I think, better for the department in general, just because of the resources we'll have available.
Good, Counselor. Anybody else with any questions for Chief Carter? Wow. Well, I have a question, Chief. How much longer are you hanging around for? There's a rumor you might retire soon.
Yeah, we're just, we're working on that. But we're just going to get through this pandemic at this point. So we've got a lot of other things to do, and that's that's taking priority right now.
Well, we're still glad to have you running the show there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Council Rams, beat the buzzer.
Yep, thank you. So I was just wondering on page 55 at the top, where just, it's just a little informative thing, move to reserve in mayor's budget. Could Mr. Ailes speak to that just a bit? Thank you.
Sure. My pleasure, Counselor. Historically, back probably five years ago or so, maybe even more, the way that we, the city budgeted for retirement was when an employee left separation of services, they either retired or they they moved on to another job, they would get bought out their vacation and or sick time depending upon their collective bargaining agreement. What we found was happening was that a lot of times departments would budget for certain separation of services, and they either wouldn't materialize, and the funds would be available for other uses within the department, or a retirement would occur that they didn't budget for, and they'd get caught short, and they'd have to rob from another line within their budget. So about four or five years ago, the mayor decided to consolidate that entire budget into the reserve section of the budget, where we budgeted $370,000. And that is basically the pool with which we distribute back to the departments upon separation of service costs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rams. Council Flaherty, once again.
Yes, a quick question. We did some work, especially in North Beverly Fire Station, some capital improvements to help out that fire station that was badly needed. How, I know there are issues at Central Fire Station, how are the buildings holding up?
Well, we've been picking away at various things at the headquarters and West Street. Now, we don't have any major issues. One thing we've been working on for the future would be the windows. That's the, that's the real main, main item at headquarters, placing those. We've got the specs ready, but, you know, we're not ready to do that yet.
Thank you. Good. I'm going to go to Mayor Cahill, and then to Council Flowers. Mayor?
Thanks, Mr. President. I just did not want to be remiss. I need to thank Chief. He's been fantastic through this. You know, every one of our department heads, those you've heard from already, and those you will, have all been tremendous during this pandemic, as have our staff, right across all departments. And I want to say, in particular, our first responders, our police and firefighters, they've really stepped up. It's been a dangerous time. It's been a stressful, scary time. And they're the ones, fire and police, and then our contracted ambulance crews, they're the ones that have dragged the danger. They're the ones that are always there. And I just want to make sure that we do thank them publicly. Our firefighters do incredible work for our city. And Chief, I, you know, I'd be up in respect for you and for people after. And, you know, I know that, as the President was looking for teaser on your departure, whenever you depart, it'll be too soon. We're really grateful for your service.
Well, thank you. I just want to say that, you know, it's been great working with everybody. The mayor's been leading this this battle. And like he said, the departments have worked so well together. The city, I'm just impressed with everybody that works for the city and the job they go and protect it.
And the community has seen that. You've all done a wonderful job, of course, led by the mayor. Council Flowers, please.
Thank you very much, President Quansey. Thank you, Chief Carter, for being here with us. And thank you also to you and your team for everything that you do for us on a regular basis. I wondered if you could just provide us a bit of an update. I know I've had the opportunity to talk with you and your team a little bit, and the mayor has helped us understand, and Mr. Ailes has, about the status of our, one of our Quint trucks and where that might be going. And obviously, this is a really unique, this budget cycle is unique because of COVID and everything that's going on. So I know, we're not in the position right now, but I wondered if you could just give us a little bit of an update from your perspective on your trucks right now, and where you see that going, what we might need to be aware of down the road.
Well, I think Brian can speak to that as far as when we're going to do that. But we've been moving forward on getting the new ladder truck. Right now, our reserve truck, it's a Quint, but it's a 75 foot Quint, has been in service for the last three weeks because the main truck, which is 2009, is out for service for the last three weeks. The one that we have in now is 24 years old, and 25 is the limit. So that one's ready to be put out of service. So we're hoping to get the new ladder truck as soon as possible.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just do want to add that this is one of our top priorities in terms of free cash use. It was originally, before the pandemic hit, something that we were looking to do before the close of the fiscal year. However, with the reconfiguring of everything, and the revenue streams, and the tightening of the budget, we feel we'll be able to do it once free cash gets certified in early fall. And it's one of our top priorities. And I know the mayor, I know he's on the call here, but he would say the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate that. And I personally feel extremely supportive of that endeavor too, and appreciate your work on it, all of you, and getting our firefighters what they need. So thank you.
Thank you. Council Hausmann.
Yeah, I just also want to take the opportunity to thank Chief Carter and his team. And I should also mention Mr. Fredrickson from last night as well. I know that when I was exploring, trying to get St. Mary's comment online at the beginning of the COVID-19 lockdown and so forth, the, you know, the department heads, you know, in this case, particularly Chief Carter and Steve Fredrickson, were immediately available, extremely helpful, right there to provide, you know, resources and assistance in trying to respond to, you know, to a needed situation. So I just want to thank you again publicly, Chief, for your help. And I think it's very indicative of your department, as well as the others, in terms of how well, you know, City Hall and the professionalism of city employees are. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Council Hausmann. Chief Carter, anything to add before we let you go?
No, just thank you for everything you you do as a council. And we really appreciate it. And we're all working together as a team. And, you know, we'll get through this.
Thank you. Keep up the great work. And please give our best to your department. Darlene Nguyen, our new Director of Planning, is next on the docket. Ms. Nguyen, have you joined us?
I'm here.
You're here. You're here. Great.
I'm almost here. Do you see me yet? Where is that? There I am.
There you are. I heard that you had a meeting earlier this evening, so.
Yes, yes. The planning board wanted to meet to finalize their recommendation to the City Council for the Briscoe School reuse project. So we snuck in a short meeting earlier to get that done, so we can get that to you for next week.
For the 15th. Great.
For the 15th. Yep.
Look forward to it. Anything you would like to say before we go to questions?
Sure. Just quickly, I'd just like to say thank you, President Quansey, for having me. And I'm very excited about jumping into this position. You know, as you know, the planning department consists of seven full time staff, which one of those is my vacant position right now. And together, we, the five technical staff support, as well as our administrative assistance support, nine committees or boards throughout the city, you know, including, you know, ranging from economic development, planning, long range planning, housing issues, historic issues, open space. So we have our hands in a lot of things. And we appreciate the support of the City Council, the numerous times that we come before you asking for approvals and zoning amendments and other sorts of things. And we look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
All good things. Thank you. Council Rotundo, you have a question?
I do, actually. Two questions. Ms. Nguyen, I know you have a position that you've left vacant. Do you plan on filling that anytime soon? And then one question, I don't know if you have the answer, or if it might be Mr. Ailes or the mayor, is to do with the dredging on the Bass River. I know we had some issues with it. And I don't know where that's at right now, but I have had a couple of people ask me if there's any movement forward anyway. And then my last thing is just a statement. I want to thank you personally, just and the mayor, and everyone else who's been involved with streamlining through this whole reopening process as a business owner. You guys have been phenomenal. You guys really stepped up the game. I can't really thank you guys enough to say that. You know, it's been challenging as a restaurant owner that we've just really tried to get through this. You know, I can truly tell you that you definitely made things a heck of a lot easier. I've heard that from several other business owners, that, you know, you streamlined that process. You've really responded to the comments we made. I mean, I just really, I can't say enough gratitude I have towards that.
You're welcome. We're glad to help and glad to see that people are opening and starting to get some sense of, you know, their establishment back and operating. It's certainly been a challenge for everybody, I think, as was said, you know, just a few moments ago. As to the Assistant Director position, my vacant position that I previously had, we are intending to fill that position. As I mentioned, you know, there's a lot of things that the planning department has their hands on. And my staff is, is, you know, working through the weekends right now, you know, graciously to help fill and work the load, fill the load. We're working on numerous grant applications for the upcoming year. We've got at least four grant applications, some long term projects that we're either finishing up, like the master plan and the preservation plan, or just going to get started on our local climate action plan. And I can't do that without that position.
And Mr. President, I'll take the rest of the question.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
First, Council Rotundo, thank you for the questions. And I won't do this every time, Mrs. Nguyen, but I'm just going to say one more time, we loved Aaron and we miss him. And with that said, Mrs. Nguyen has been fantastic. And I know she's going to be consistently great on the city's behalf. You know, she came into the position as as Planning Director in the middle of all this, and have stepped in. And you're right, Council Rotundo, a lot of good, really good work has gone into this reopening of the different parts of our downtown and really our local economy. And she's been at the helm of it and done fantastic work. So thank you, Mrs. Nguyen. On the dredging piece, so there are a couple of things going on. Right now, we are involved in conversations with the dredging contractor to try to, you know, to try to settle the bills they submitted for, you know, for a project that never really got started, unfortunately. Just for anybody listening or watching who doesn't know the story, we were given approval from the federal government, from the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers, that we could take the dredged sediment from the Bass River and dispose of it at the ocean, the ocean disposal site off of Jeffrey's Ledge. It's, you know, it's a specific spot off the coast of Massachusetts within state coastal waters. We went ahead and got a state grant to match our money, and we put $3 million towards this first dredging in 70 years of the Lower Bass River. And then we put an RFP out, and we got a company to respond, and we awarded them the contract. They came to mobilize to work. And in doing so, or after they arrived, we were told by the Army Corps that they were not going to approve any coordinates for disposal. It's become clear that they never should have approved our project. They should have given the green light to the disposal of this, based on the test results from years ago and more recently. We are investigating our ability to bring action against the Army Corps, and we hope to do. to do so. We also had consultants for the city who really were our experts in the matter, who we also feel are liable and responsible. So we're, we're going a process of trying to sort through that as, as much in a cooperative manner as going through the, through the legal proceedings as necessary. There's one other piece to this, and that is a, some testing that we have discussed with our LSP that we know needs to happen to determine whether there's any, going to be any cleanup requirement, or whether the sediments are inert and not, not of concern as long as they stay where they are. This will all lead us to know whether there's a realistic possibility in the future of, of dredging the river. So it's all, all that is very much unknown at this point in time. If you have any further questions on that you want to ask now, great, otherwise, we can, we can continue that conversation to another forum, but happy to delve into it if we need to know. Thanks.
Councilor Rotundo, you're good for now?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Housman?
Yes, it's for either the mayor or Ms. Nguyen made reference to the Climate Action Plan. Could you briefly describe sort of the scope of, of, of the Climate Action Plan? Is it resiliency? Is it new programmatic or, or policy changes for the city? Just sort of give us a, a thumbnail sketch of, of what the, the scope is of that.
I'll start, and Mayor can jump in if he wants to. The, the Climate Action Plan is a joint climate action plan with the City of Salem. So Beverly and Salem will be working together to do a regional climate action plan. We are final, we, we have selected a consultant, and we are still in the process of notifying the consultants that we have not selected. It was a very difficult decision. We got lots of wonderful responses to that. And the, so to your point, your question about it's a, it's a long-term strategy with focusing on both resiliency actions and mitigation. And there'll be, I expect there'll be a wide range of strategies and implementation tools for us to put forward.
So it's, on the mitigation side, we're talking about trying to protect the city infrastructure and so forth for the, the impact of climate change. Is that a fair, a fair description?
I'll, I'll jump in, Mr. Nguyen. So, Councilor, as, as Mrs. Nguyen said, the, the two components, the mitigation and the, and the adaptation. The mitigation are the steps we're taking to cut our greenhouse gas emissions, and the resilience here, or resilience here adaptation piece, actually adaptation, we need to leave that out. I, I always get the term confused, but yes, mitigation is, is the reduction of greenhouse gases, and there will be a number of action items recommended for Salem on their own, for Beverly on their own, for the communities in joint, you know, in concert. There'll be recommendations for the municipal functions and for the community at large, because we, where that inventory will show just what each municipal government produces in terms of greenhouse gases, and what the community, all, all public private sector together uses. And our hope is that there'll be a really deep and thoughtful and robust set of really actionable items that we can dig into when the process is complete.
Okay, thank you. And, and just, the timeframe on rolling out the plan, the Climate Action Plan?
Yeah, so we, we're getting started now. I mean, we're setting up initial meetings with the, the consultant just to narrow down the scope. We got a little bit of an extension. We were anticipating starting and having a portion of the work done in June, and we will still get started, but the state has given us the leeway to allow us to do all the work in 2021, fiscal year 2021. So it'll be a 12-month project.
Okay, thank you.
I'd add, sorry, I'd add to that that, you know, it may spill over into July and August of a year from now, but the, the money needs to be, you know, spent and encumbered to be spent by the end of fiscal year 21. The first step in the, in the plan will be the greenhouse gas inventory work, which is the work that doesn't involve the public. So, you know, as, that'll be step one, and that will help us be a little further along and hopefully more fully reopen, or, you know, more significantly reopen, so that we can do some, some, you know, more in-person public process as we move forward with the plan. Certainly, that's a hope. I, I would say that the consultant's also ready to, to do much of it remotely if, if the virus requires, but, you know, we certainly have hopes to be more in the same place physically as we move forward with the public part of it.
And, and not, not to prolong this, but on the municipal side, the sort of step one, as you described it, is that sort of working where they're harvesting various initiatives that are in the MAPC website and so forth? Do you sort of get a preview?
Go ahead, Ms. Nguyen.
Well, for quantifying our greenhouse, we're quantifying our greenhouse gas emissions to set the baseline. So it's looking at all our city, you know, and regional as well, you know, our inputs that we're creating greenhouse gases, is how I understand it. Very complex model.
There is, I think Councilor Housman may be getting at the fact that we report annually under the Green Communities Act, and so there is, there is a lot of documentation of things that, that we already possess, that the greenhouse gas inventory team, that the consultant has on board, they will be, they'll be pulling a lot of information that each community already has available to them. And, you know, there, there's a, this is a profession, you know, the, the gathering and running through the template of greenhouse gas inventorying. So I can't explain it entirely, but, you know, we certainly can have, can have an explanation for you folks as, as it works underway, or maybe as a, maybe as a preview from that team. I think that it'd probably be, probably be interested, and the public would be interested in hearing about once they're, once they're on board and doing their work.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm mindful this is a budget he's hearing, so I don't want to get, I, I'll wind up my questions at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Ames?
Thank you, thank you. I sort of had the same sort of questions about the historic preservation plan, including the budget, where the funding was coming from, the timeline, and what your goals were at the end.
Thank you for that, Councilor Ames. So the, and I should probably know a little bit more about this one, but Emily Hutchings in my office has really taken the lead and run with this. The preservation plan is scheduled to be done, a similar situation, we were supposed to expend all the funds through the end of this fiscal year, and they've moved very quickly. They've had to adapt to the fact that we could not have the public meetings. I need to, you know, they're making very good progress, and I need to check in and see like whether we'll be doing some of the work in July, although I have not heard that yet extending into the next fiscal year. The, so the goal of the, the funding from the preservation plan was funded through the Mass Historic Commission, so it's a grant-funded project. And there's a variety of goals, but it's to identify, you know, whether there are, you know, local historic districts that we might pursue as a policy, what other policies that the city would look to adopt in terms of historic preservation, how we might amend zoning ordinances, or amend some of our current procedures to reflect historic preservation initiatives. And also really just to get a, get the community sense and some, some understanding of what the community feel for historic preservation is. And I think Emily told me there were over 500 responses to the survey that we did, and perhaps that was because, you know, so many of us are more at our computers now and, and had the access to do it, but that was really remarkable. I mean, we had a great response to the master plan survey as well, and used those same lists to reach out to people, but I was still kind of surprised that we got that, you know, really tremendous response from that part of it, so.
Thanks. And so this was entirely funded by an outside source?
Yes, and we're, our labor, you know, we provide a match, which is often in kind, so.
Okay. And I also think if you ended up with the neighborhoods, I'm one to always say, whatever you can do to help local homeowners in whatever way with whatever funds, I think to keep those Ward Three neighborhoods, you know, a lot of those starter homes and people in there supported is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ames. Anyone else? Well, Ms. Nguyen, thank you. You've had a busy night, so we're going to let you go.
All right, thank you.
Look forward to seeing you soon.
You too.
Next up is Mark Foster, our Director of Emergency Management. Mr. Foster, are you still here?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Paul.
Good evening.
Good evening to everyone else.
A few words about your department and what you've been doing?
Sure, absolutely. During these times, I had the opportunity to work with many of the city's employees during this trying times. I've been very impressed by the city's employees who've been working mainly from home or remotely, many of them working over their own computers or their kids' computers, and were still getting the job of the city done. It's been very, very impressed. My emergency management department has set up a virtual OC and has been working seamlessly with the city's emergency response departments. I'm not sure if you know, but we do a, a daily situation report, I think. Estelle Rand gets that, is that true, Councilor Rand? Have you been sharing that, any of that with the councilors? Oops.
Councilor Rand, have you been keeping it to yourself?
Thank you. I was, I had spoken with Mr. Foster and the mayor about sharing that with the City Council because it's been pretty useful and helpful information, just kind of tie, tying different departments all together on one page. I hadn't gotten quite the clearance on sharing that with the whole council yet, so, no, I haven't been sharing that.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
That's okay.
President, I apologize. It, it is a document that's really meant to be internal. With that said, the council are, you know, I'll have that, have that, I think, need to, to know what's going on. So I, I apologize that that has not really been answered, but, you know, please, please do, Councilor. And, and since I'm talking, let me just say, we, we all, we all know that Mark's a great professional, and, and he hasn't lived through a pandemic either. He's not that old, but he's, he's dealt with a whole lot of emergency situations in his career, and what an incredible resource for this, this man who runs a, you know, one of, a very small number of regional, regional FEMA teams around the country to be ours in Beverly, and to be able to spend so much time on helping us do what we need to do locally. I just want to make sure I say that, because we don't, it isn't always, Mark's not always front and center in our, in our local work, and for these last few months, he has been, and we're very grateful.
And we've always said we're lucky that he's a Beverly resident who's chosen to set up shop up at the airport. You know, we're very lucky. Councilor Housman?
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, underscore what the mayor just said about Mr. Foster and his team, and, and just provide a, you know, a, a single concrete example. I know that when the Salem Field House was set up for, as a quarantine site for homeless folks in the Beverly-Salem area, a, a trailer showed up at the, at the Field House, and it came from Mr. Foster's resources, and it was basically an emergency shelter in a trailer. It was like everything you could possibly imagine in terms of, of equipment, cots, you name it. And just so, I, I have to say that the Director of Life Bridge was kind of blown away when he opened the trailer and looked inside and described to me all the stuff that was inside that was going to be useful for the services he was trying to provide there. So just one concrete example, you know, very quiet, but, but he does quite, quite a professional and outstanding job for, for our city and our region. So thank you publicly, Mr. Foster.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else with anything for Mr. Foster? All right. Mark, thanks for coming by. We appreciate it. Keep up your great work. I just heard the mayor say that you're not that old, but I know how, I know what you turned this year, so let's, don't slow it down for a few more years, please.
All right, Paul, thank you very much. Thanks.
Glad to be with you and your family. Man of the hour, Mr. Bill Burke is here from the Department of Health, the Health Department, and his budget is on page 88, and it goes to page 91. Mr. Burke?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. President, Mayor Cahill. Thank you for having me. Not really too many introductory comments. We know what's been going on, what continues to go on, and I appreciate the, the team effort the city has made in assisting the Health Department in, in providing the best services possible for the community and keeping it safe.
Thank you. You've done a tremendous job. Councilor Rotundo has a question.
Mr. Burke, thanks for everything you've been doing during this time. My question is, with all the additional COVID work that has to be done, do you fill your staff appropriately? Do you feel that, you know, with the inspections and just a lot of new regulations and guidelines coming, and I know we've had many conversations with the restaurants and stuff like that, but do you feel that you could use additional staff? Is it even able to get into your budget with the CARES Act money and those types of things?
Thank you for the question, Councilor. Yes, I mean, staffing is always a challenge, even in, in non-COVID times, but as we're in COVID times, the mayor, you know, we've worked hand-in-hand with the mayor's office and, and other public safety EMS, emergency management throughout this process, and we, we were able to advertise, and we're in the process of bringing someone on board to assist with some staffing. So that has been in place, that can be a help, especially as we move forward with the recovery and reopening. Although the state reopening doesn't require us to review and approve, approve plans, we are responsible of responding to complaints, trying to provide guidance, and, you know, work for the general safety of the, of the public. So we vision this, the candidate we have in the process that bring on board has experience, can hit the ground running, and we will be tasking him with some of, like, the COVID reopening of restaurants. As you know, you know, we, we, we enforce the state sanitary code and the model food code for food establishments that require regular inspection, so we still need to do that. And we'll do this hybrid type of inspection, especially for places that might have been shuttered for the, for the duration of this so far, you know, some places such as your own facility and others providing takeout, you know, could be and have been, remained open, but some have just closed until such time, depending on their business model, their own personal choice and staffing needs. So we want to get in and just kind of, you know, work with them. You kind of, you know, we've always viewed ourselves as a partnership educators, as just as much enforcement agents, so we take that approach. And, and for those who work with us and have businesses that interact with us, you realize that we're only as good as, you know, the partnership that we have, because without self-compliance and buy-in, you know, you could have an army and still be chasing people. So that's the status of that where we are now. You mentioned the reopening guidance, it, it's, it's always in change, always in flux, changes in the middle of the night, you know, but we've gotten used to that as best you can. It's just, hey, what you learned yesterday, you think you got it down, you, you can answer questions and then it changes. So, and, and just the various sectors, you go from childcare to, to medical health to restaurants, golf, recreation, beaches, parks, programs, so pretty much everything is touched. And then, you know, even, even when you're getting answers, questions lead to more questions. The simple thing about food trucks at breweries versus table service, outdoor dining, indoor dining, table length whiffs. So, so, yeah, we are surviving, and then there's the public health nurse piece that, you know, we talked about probably when we first met, when this was beginning, about tracking and contact tracing. You know, public health departments are notified of communicable diseases of residents that are tested positive in their community, and they do the follow-up, either isolation and quarantine, establishing who their close contacts were during a, you know, possible time of exposure, making recommendations or excluding them from work. It could be, you know, we do this for foodborne illness, we do it for other communicable disease, it could be a Hep A outbreak, it could be, you know, measles, it could be, you know, salmonella type of thing in, in a food establishment. So certainly, this is a lot grand to scale, it hasn't stopped for months, and, and, and it changes daily, but hopefully we're moving in the right direction, and the city has implemented public health policies timely, and, and when we thought the state And when we thought the state should have moved a little quicker, we, we, you know, we moved when we felt we should have moved, and the state usually followed shortly thereafter. So, you know, certainly, the mayor's been on board. We've worked in concert. You know, Mark Foster was on before us, been a great access with resources and assistance and manpower. We had Chief Carter and Chief Lillacher, both great partners. And the police department has been, you know, extraordinary, and it's been very helpful to my inspectional staff to have the support of the police when enforcing face coverings and especially with the general public. You know, we have a pretty good working relationship with the grocery stores and places we work with, but that's been helpful. And even with the police, too. I, you know, was sitting here, had the benefit of, I guess, the benefit of being one of the last ones. Usually, I'm one of the first ones, so I had the benefit of listening kind of in depth to some of the discussions of other departments. And even the police department, the Community Impact Unit's been a tremendous resource, not only in this, this outbreak, but prior to that, when we had people with hoarding issues and we, only tool we have is to condemn the house and essentially make them homeless and really just how would we help that situation? You know, Community Impact with their embedded clinician now is a great resource. So we can try to get the mental health people out there. We can get connected. They have great resources within the community. We had a case this, with COVID, a homeless person positive. They were able to track them down, you know, convince them to go to one of the hotels where they could stay and be taken care of, monitored for symptoms and so forth, and got them off the street to prevent, you know, prevent further contact and spread. So I'm just thinking of some of those, you know, even with, when we got the opioid grants several years back with the opioid crisis, police stepped up. Officer, now Sergeant Panjwani was on our team from day one, promoting, carrying Narcan, doing the right thing. And so, you know, just sitting here, you know, had the opportunity to reflect of all the good things and really all the public health work that these other departments help with. And in public health, I think you've seen, and by some of the authority that is granted to public health, they realize that how important public health is to the general well-being of a nation. And a lot of great firsts here in Massachusetts. One great resource, I'm kind of just going off here, I apologize for that. There's a public health museum in Tewksbury. And if you look at that, it's, it's a great synopsis of public health and the great things that were done here in Massachusetts. So maybe we should move on to the budget.
Well, I think maybe we should have a field trip to the, to the museum in Tewksbury.
You gonna get a box lunch?
Yeah, I'll bring the lunches. You borrow the bus from the scene.
Well, maybe Todd will bring half.
All right. Yeah, we like to do that. We like to share. Councilor Feldman, please.
Yes, thank you, President, and thank you so much for being here, Mr. Burke. I really appreciate all the work that you've been doing lately with everything, with the pandemic and everything going on. So my one question was, on the first page in the overtime line, there's the note that, you know, a lot of the events not happening due to COVID, that was the bigger reduction, but at the end says, "All COVID response OT will be charged elsewhere." I was wondering if that is, if the plan is that something covered by the CARES Act funds or what, where the elsewhere was?
Yes, that, the CARES Act is one funding mechanism, and there has been some specific to local public health. Initially, we received $35,000 for assistance with implement, you know, fighting this thing, so to speak. That was made, and we were part of a regional grant back several years ago when there was regional grants. There's eight communities on the North Shore that got together. We were one of five in the state. So when we had that pre-existing setup, we were one of the first groups. The big cities, you know, like the Boston's, the Springfield's, the Westers got direct funding. And then second were these groups that had pre-existing agreements. So Salem is the host agency. They were the funnel. So we have received that funding. There are a couple other regional programs that have recognized that we can allocate some of these grant, you know, regional, the regional grants to promote regionalization and shared services, and they recognize COVID is, you know, it can be one of those things. So that's, that's another avenue, you know, might be covering some of our public health nurse costs. And I want to thank the school department and the school nurses who have been helping us with contact tracing and assisting our one public health nurse since, you know, pretty much early on in this. And so I would be remiss in not thanking them for their assistance. And, and we're looking at some of them continuing through the summer and so forth. As, as we reopen, we expect maybe, you know, I don't know how much of a resurgence, but we do expect to see more positive cases that will still need to be tracked, and the importance of tracking them in real time and getting these people quarantined and/or isolated to prevent, you know, taking any steps backwards in the phased opening in the state.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I do just want to add for the benefit of the council, Mr. Burke mentioned a number of funding sources. Mr. Burke's work and his team's work are, are one of the kind of forefront efforts that the city's undertaking. The vast majority of his staffing costs, particularly the overtime, are going to be eligible, in our minds, for the FEMA reimbursement, which is the 75% component that the federal government pays us. The additional 25% match piece would be something that may be eligible for the grant that Mr. Burke talked about or the CARES Act funding that Mr. Burke talked about. I just wanted to clarify that because there's a number of different funding sources that are helping to support the number of initiatives that are going on across the city in a number of departments, some of which are eligible for FEMA, some of which are not and have to hit the CARES account, and some of which have their own identified funding source. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Your Honor, the mayor.
Thanks, Mr. President. And Mr. Ailes, if I could just finish that, that thought, the eligibility for those reimbursements will last as long as the state of emergency is in effect. Correct? Yeah, that's what I thought. Mr. President, I appreciate the indulgence. This is such an unusual time that there are people to thank, even though the focus here is on preparing next year's budget. And, you know, Mr. Burke and I have known each other a long, long time. We first really worked together in the, in the late 90s on a statewide summer camp regulatory reform, and he was incredibly helpful in that. And we spent some time working on tobacco control and smoke-free workplace efforts, both locally and at the state level. He's always been an incredible talent and resource. He's been our Health Director in Beverly for more years than you'd expect. He must have really started out young. But, you know, from the start of this, the, the closing down of our economy and our society was so immediate. It happened in a matter of days. And, and, you know, Bill and his team had to help, really, they had an integral role in making all that work. And then there was the sorting through of what the new rules were, and the Health Department and the Board of Health had a central role in all of that. And now, as we've worked through it and we're, and we're starting to reopen in phases, the, the draft guidance, the reverse, reversals, of course, from the state, and no knock on the state, everybody's been trying to sort it as they go. You know, the, the handing down of regulatory language, the digesting of it all, the trying to figure out how it applies locally, the being available to try to work through with people and answer questions of so many people in this community who've been trying to sort through their own livelihood and how to, you know, how to survive, how to, how to tide themselves over, how to restart. There's just been, I don't think there's anybody, been anybody busier in city government than Mr. Burke. And it's, it's, when I say busy, I mean, it's, it's all been time well spent. He's been incredibly effective. He's been, he's, he's had some real, I don't know if durable is the right word, but some real stamina to, to work through all this. This is nothing anybody signed on for. And he, as an individual, in his official role, has been, had more land on his desk than anybody else that I've seen in, in the process. He's done incredible work on all of our behalfs, and he's really been, been my local hero through this. Joe Realy and Dave Goodwin, our health inspectors, also deserve thanks. They've done yeoman work, as, as Mr. Burke said. You know, there, there've been a number of enforcement pieces here, and our inspectors have done what they always do, which is always to be a partner with our local businesses, with our community, always to be, you know, help in educating them and never look to, to harm anybody. And they've just, they've, they've really been great ambassadors for the city and how they handle that. And then the third, the, the fourth person here that just needs the biggest shout-out is the, really, the, the rock star of this city. Our public health nurse, Teresa Kirsch, has been non-stop for three-plus months. As Mr. Burke said, the contact tracing component of her job has been a, you know, two full-time jobs in one, right on through. It's really felt never-ending. And contact tracing is not her whole job. She's also needed to be a, a source for a lot of, a lot of, a lot of guidance on the, on the public health front as well. I will say that she, very much helped from our school nurses, who were able to come on board, and she has trained them, and they've done a lot of great contact tracing work. And then she's also accessed the state partners in health-coordinated effort at hiring and, and, you know, in activating contact tracers. So she's been incredible, and it's not just the work that she's done, but the grace and, and the camaraderie that, that she really brings to it. She's been a, they both, Bill and Teresa have both been just a joy to work with. And that's, that's not easy because the, the stress and the, and this is very weight, as we all understand. I mean, a pandemic is, none of us knew what was going to hit us come the beginning of March. And, you know, they just have been in a time of great sadness for many, in a time of great fear, and a time that the right steps have needed to be taken from a public health perspective. They both have been much more than incredible professionals. They've been special. They've been very special and, and, you know, more than anyone else. These two are people that, that I'm incredibly grateful for. And I'll stop because I don't want to pull a Governor Baker and cry on camera. And I, and I know that that's all very genuine because that's the kind of person he is. But thank you to our team, and, and can't say it enough, but thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Great words. Councilor Flowers?
Thank you. The mayor anticipated part of my question, actually, Mr. Burke. And I want to say too, thank you to you and your team for, I can't, I cannot actually even imagine how busy you have been. I can try to get at it, and it just seems monumental. I'm wondering, as you were mentioning, our public health nurse and the school nurses doing contact tracing, and then the possibility of, you know, that COVID is still with us, and moving forward in September, if our schools are reopening in some form, we would anticipate still needing contact tracing, and our school nurses will also be pulled back into their school nursing role. I wondered if you could just help us understand, both from personnel for you, but also how it impacts your budget or not, what the mayor mentioned about tapping into the state, the contact tracing program, and just help us understand the connections there a little bit.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for the kind words. I appreciate it. And, and again, I thanked everybody except my own team. So thank, thank you, Mayor, for, for recognizing them. And, and when I say thank you, I, I look at it as one. So we are a team, and that's the only way we can survive because we spend more time together than we do with our loved ones. And, you know, you know, we're still here. It's 90 Colon Street. But yes, the school nurses, we had some discussions about the summer coverage. I mentioned some of these regional grants. There are some nurses that have been already trained that we've made some, we've reached out a week or so ago. So we're bringing one, one of those nurses on that can be paid under a regional program. She has been doing some work for the City of PB in this very realm. The good part is she has availability on weekends because, you know, this thing's 24/7, three, almost, well, three months, not 365 yet, but, so that's one source. Certainly, you know, we'll see what the school calendar may look like, but you're absolutely right. We definitely, my comment with our nurses, we want to be ahead of this, not wait for it to happen. We want nurses trained, ready to go, in place, so we don't miss a beat. Because that's, you know, that's the key to this continuing to open and taking any step backwards is quickly identifying people that have positive cases, their close contacts, and get them out of circulation so we don't further spread it. Contact tracing, a great program initiated by the state. It's very helpful, but, you know, it's not the cure-all end-all. A lot of them are volunteers, I think. I'm trying to, you know, it's not as simple as, hey, here's a case, give them a call, you ask them these questions, it's done. Sometimes it's connecting the cases. I mean, the mayor, you know, a lot of times, public health, you know, Teresa provides us with updates on numbers every day, and then sometimes, how come we lose two, and how come we have one? And, well, because this one was in a long-term care facility here, but then they went to the hospital, but their home address is in a different community. So sometimes these cases get traded. And, and the good part about, you know, the local public health nurses, as well as the health directors in the area, we have a great working relationship because we are kind of our own animal and not too many of us. So with changing time and conflicting guidance, we often look to one another to say, what did you think about this? What, am I crazy or are you crazier? And, and what's your consensus? And sometimes, that's been the best thing, is just look at something, and if nothing else, it's constant, regional-level playing field type of guidance that, hey, if this establishment's in PB, they're getting the same answer they're going to get in Beverly and Salem and Danbus and Lynn. So we try to do it that way. But back to the nursing piece, they have a good relationship. So they'll see things, or somehow this case was connected with another case. So the contact tracing is, is a great help, but sometimes you lose that local, I don't want to say control, but that knowledge. And sometimes people, too, they're scared, they're frightened, they're upset, they're tentative. So I think a nurse, the mayor mentioned compassion and grace. I think that's important because people feel a trusted source, and they know the person's working for the community, it's not some outsider. Who am I giving this kind of personal information to? So, you know, it, it's all help, it's all hands-on deck in, in this situation. And I think, you know, everything is helpful and important, but I think there's nothing better than the local public health nurse, you know, in your community, you know, dealing with your community.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Ames?
Thank you. Mr. Burke, and thank you very much for all the hard work you and your team have done to keep us safe. I have a couple of questions, one's for you, and the other probably is Mr. Ailes. So my question is, I have a bunch of residents who are asking me about Dane Street Beach and the parking on Lothrip Street, and I was just hoping you might be able to give me a quick update on that? If that was going to open up or, you know, the longevity of that situation? Maybe it already has because we just started a new era.
Maybe I can help with that question, Councilor. With the, the governor's order around beaches, which hasn't changed yet, and I don't know at what point it might, but one of his orders around, one of the pieces of the order around beaches was, in order to limit the number of people at the beach, it's necessary to, to limit the parking available. And so at Lynch Park, we essentially cut the parking in half by not opening the satellite lot and not planning to do any parking along the grass on the side of the exit driveway. At Lothrip, at Dane Street Beach and near to Dane Street, we decided that the lot was one place. We, we now just have a couple of handicap, I think we have four handicap spots where there were 14 total spaces. And we've turned some of the parking along Lothrip to no parking, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And that's been to effectuate that ability to limit the number of people who can practically, you know, walk onto the grass and onto the sand. And with that, even with that, we need to track it because on some of these nice beach days coming up, we may need to limit. We may need to, you know, if, if the beach gets overcrowded and people are not able to social distance appropriately, we may need to clear the beach. I don't want to do that. And so we, we're, we're looking at the parking dynamic. I think it's more likely in the near term that if anything, we may take away more parking rather than put parking back. We're trying to be, we're trying to anticipate and respond to needs of the residents in the neighborhood. And, and so if there's anybody you're hearing who is having a tough time with their own overnight parking, please let us know. We'll, we'll try to address that. And certainly, we, we all want, you know, one of the, one of the great things about this time of year is to celebrate the, the great weather. People go to the beaches and people put up with being elbow-to-elbow with other people because they want to be at the, at the beach and at the water. We want it to be a normal summer. It's not that yet. It may not get there all summer. We'll see. You know, we'll, we'll take our guidance from the state on that. And, and so if it, if it eases up and becomes less restrictive, we absolutely will respond in restoring some parking. But we're not there yet, and we're not getting that sign from the state yet.
I, I completely understand and respect exactly where you're coming from. I just would like... I just would like, um, all of you to understand too, that I hear from people who are hurting fiscally and their access to the beach, you know, is one thing that they can, you know, that's, that's economically feasible. And beyond that, you know, in a situation where the city is limited in the services that it can provide very often, not obviously Mr. Burke and his team are working overtime and many of these departments are, but for a lot of the front-facing services, a lot of residents feels, feel like they're, they're paying their taxes, they're getting less, they're getting laid off, they're feeling the pinch, you know, and, and, you know, that's one of, I'm sure we've all heard about these tax, you know, uh, consternation about the tax increase. And whatever decision we all make as a council, you know, we make as a council, but I think, um, obviously, we, we represent residents and at the same time, and so we need to listen to them, but Mr. Burke at the same time is protecting all of us. And so it's, it's a balance, it's a balance. So thank you for your comments. And then my, um, question for Mr. Ailes is it appears that there's a myriad, I think you mentioned four funding sources to help with this. And I was just, um, hoping that at some point or wondering if we were going to see, um, budgets associated with them and the dollars that have been expended and then how they have impacted on the budget that, that we're looking at now, ways that we've been able to go further with the, the income we have and just a better understanding of the big picture. So thank you.
Sure. Um, and I'll just very generally, hopefully it kind of gives you a sense of, of comfort with, um, the fact that it is constantly a moving target. We are constantly getting revised guidance. Um, we have submitted the CARES application. I believe, um, our city accountant forwarded that out to the council earlier today. Um, and so you have a copy of that, uh, and the various buckets that it will potentially support. However, that too is fluid. And as new, um, guidance comes from the state, as new, um, health concerns arise, we need to be flexible in where that money goes. Uh, that said, one overarching restriction that seems to flow with all of these funding sources is that very few, if any of these funding sources are seen as, uh, able to supplant existing budgets, right? These are all about added costs associated with COVID, added costs with enforcement, added costs with the healthcare component, added costs with social distancing or, uh, you know, public spaces, reconfiguring of public spaces. Those are, uh, technology challenges that are now, um, in our faces because of remote learning, because of, uh, remote, uh, office work that we're all doing. And, and so a lot of these funds are designed to support those added costs that typically aren't supported with the taxpayer-based budget, a general fund. Um, so that's very general kind of overarching guidance, but as we finalize the expenditures, of course, we're more than happy to share all of that with you. We're very transparent, will, we can release whatever, um, you know, expenditure records, um, to you. Um, and I do believe that when the CARES grant award does come, um, there is a place for further discussion with the council, um, uh, before it's accepted and, and, uh, has to work through that grant acceptance process that you're typically involved in.
No, that, that is good news that, um, that you'll be sharing that with us. And while, yes, I did receive the email today, personally, I was hoping for a little more detail to understand, um, what technology exactly meant. And we don't have to dig into it right now, but, and I understand the school side and I, um, and I understand the school need and the just way that the ground is shifting so quickly under the school budget as well. But for the technology on the city side and for the rest of it, it would be great for you to share that and whatever else you can with us, um, so that I personally can transmit that back to the people that I represent. That would be really important for me, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Aims. Do we have any more questions for Mr. Burke? Mr. Burke, thank you for being here. Um, quite a, uh, quite a co- great conversation. I mean, about a, a tough subject, but you guys have really stepped up and done a tremendous job.
Well, I want to thank the council for their, always their support in, in the mayor and, uh, we appreciate it. And like I said, it's very sincere, it is a team effort and, uh, echo Chief Carter, this will pass, we'll get through it, you know, but, uh, thanks again.
Thank you, sir. And last, but certainly not least, um, our Director of Community Services is here, Mr. Bruce Doye. Mr. Doye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I know it's getting late and I do, I would be remiss though if I didn't thank all of my department heads in community services. I've been blessed to have great people working with me. Uh, we lost Anna to retirement, but Allison certainly has come in, you know, hit the ground running and is, is going full moon. Uh, I lost, uh, Jocelyn Ruel Kersker, who's now working at City Hall and doing great things for the city, but John Peadall has become my new assistant director and has, and has hit the ground running. He's an old Beverly Rec guy and, uh, just has huge passion for the job. Um, you know, Mary Ann's doing great things at the senior center, her staff, and David Parent Chief with the veterans. And of course, you know, we already talked about Bill to extent, but, uh, they're all doing amazing things and I've been blessed. I have a hard time picking up with everything they are doing because, you know, constantly asking them, how can I help, how can I help? But they're five steps ahead of me, so, um, again, they're all doing great things. So, uh, the Rec Department, we have our challenges right now, as you probably are aware, uh, trying to figure out, you know, how, if we can run our park program, if and how we can run our camp program safely at, in a public park with a lot of public resources at that park. And, uh, so we've had meetings with the Health Department, we've had meetings, um, within our, within the city and just trying to figure out if the guidelines are going to allow us to do these things which we desperately want to do. We're recreation people. We hated closing down the playgrounds, we hated closing down the basketball courts, but these were all things that had to be done, uh, when we didn't do it or when kids took down some of the blockages at some of the courts. You know, you had 10 or 15 kids playing basketball and doing other things. So, you know, under the guidelines and social distancing and so forth, we had to do it. But, um, my staff, again, I've been blessed with great people at the Rec Department and, um, they, I can't say enough about the help that they've given me, uh, putting up signs. We put up signs for a lot of different things around the city and, um, you know, closing things down and so forth. And again, they've been great and pitching in whenever they need to. So I can't say enough about that and we're looking forward to having as good a summer as we can. You know, as Mary Ann mentioned, they've canceled the, um, uh, Senior Day in the Park. Homecoming is, you know, looking hard at how we could do something, uh, but having Lobsterfest with the same thing, you know, thousands of people coming down, sitting under a tent in close proximity would be tough. Fireworks, things like that. You know, I'm hoping to still do summer concerts to some degree, uh, when we get more clearance, but, um, they're all scheduled, just a matter of whether they're going to be able to do them. So we're trying to do what we can, uh, to make lives better for everybody, but it's going to be hard under the current guidelines, so.
Thank you, Mr. Doye. Uh, any general questions or questions about Mr. Doye's budget? Council Aims.
Thank you, Mr. Doye. I was just curious, um, how you saw your staffing changing over the rest of at least 2020. Thanks.
Well, our full-time staff is in place and I don't anticipate that changing at all, but it's a part-time staff. As you may know, we go from, there's, there's five of us full-time and we hire 70, 80 kids in the summer, plus another 40 to 50 CITs. So we go from very small to very large. And again, all that staffing in the summer is going to depend on some of the decisions we have to make soon about, uh, running some of our programs. So, you know, we're hoping we can hire as many staff members as we can, but, um, again, we have to be able to run these programs safely and to the guidelines that the state is recommending, so, um, or requiring, I should say. So yeah, and it's going to be, it's, a lot of it's dependent. I keep saying, there's a lot of balls in the air. We're, we're asking a lot of questions. Uh, like I said, we met with the Health Department last week and even they, we, nobody's privy to what's going to happen in phase three for camps and, and so forth. So we're making a lot of guesses at what might change. And it's hard when we're supposed to start at the beginning of, first day of phase three with our park program and our camp program, we don't know what to expect three weeks from now. So, uh, again, we're, we're planning for, going full speed ahead, but it's, uh, just hard to finalize things when we don't know.
I can appreciate that. So it also looks like on a certain level, your budget could be variable depending on what happens.
Exactly. I mean, you know, Mr. Ailes could tell you, our budget is a little unique in that typically for our enterprise side, which we'll talk about a little later, uh, we bring in a lot of revenue in the, in, we're starting in February, February through June, and then we spend all that money in the summer because our staff is now working to, for that year's summer camps and so forth. Same thing with the park program. You know, all our, our city budget, uh, for park one staff is, you know, starts on July 1st. We spend it all between July and the end of August, or most of it. And then, um, so again, a lot of that's going to be dependent upon what happens. So, um, you know, we have been using some extra staff now because we have to, you know, monitor social distancing at the parks and the beaches. Uh, but again, a lot of that is going to be covered by the FEMA reimbursement in the CARES Act. So we've been tracking very closely our expenses. As Mr. Burke said, um, we can only charge back what's over and above what we normally would do, but almost everything we've done up until a week ago has been extra in terms of staffing and so we're hoping to recoup most of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Aims. Anybody else from Mr. Doye? Your Honor?
Thanks, Mr. President. I, I just want to one more time give a thanks and, and I, I can't overlook Mr. Doye. Uh, look, in, in regular times, Mr. Doye is always there on a holiday, on a weekend, whenever there's an event that, that needs his attention and help. So he, he always goes above and beyond on our behalf and I, I'm grateful for that every day of the year. He also during this time has been extra busy. Um, you know, he, we, we brought on some of the Rangers early, um, when, when the governor found it necessary to close the, uh, uh, Department of, um, the state beaches and some other communities followed suit. We, we looked and, and we talked this through and, and Mayor Driscoll and I talked it through as two communities and we talked it through internally. None of us wanted to close those spaces that people really need and rely on to get out and, and be with nature. And so that meant a lot more work for Bruce and his team, uh, these last couple of months at Lynch Park and at, at Dane Street in particular. They've been fantastic and, and I wouldn't have expected less. He's always professional and I'm grateful for that. I'm going to make sure I say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Council Brady.
Sorry about that. Um, you know, the annual question for Bruce, uh, first of all, he did such an amazing job on Pete's Park, we're tremendously grateful for his input there, um, is the equipment repair. And I know a couple of years ago, we made a, uh, conclusion, I think Jerry Perry, that the enterprise fund could be done for that. And, uh, tennis courts are always something that the, the neighbors and the constituents, uh, raise to me. Um, and I just wanted to say, Bruce, uh, because Bruce and I grew up on the same street, I haven't been inside your house in 50 years and now I'm looking at it. That's great. Thank you.
Well, once this is.
It hasn't changed much. Your old house is changing. I go by it all the time and it's looking great. Well, again, in terms of the, uh, question about the courts and so forth, I mean, this is something I've been talking about for four or five years. We did spend $275,000 about, uh, two years ago to fix all of the playground repairs that needed to be done. And, uh, some of that came from enterprise, or a lot of it came from enterprise, some of it came from others, our Park of the Year Fund and so forth. Courts, I've been saying, you know, we're looking at $500,000 to $1 million to fix every court in the city. Uh, some of our tennis courts are, you know, deplorable, uh, the two courts at Cove, the court at Cahill, uh, but even some of the other ones, like Longfellow was just, or, excuse me, Pete's Park was just redone last year and this already cracks because the subsurface isn't the per- isn't perfect. So that's the same at Ober and some of the better courts. Fortunately, we have six new courts at the high school, which are in great shape, but a lot of people want to play in their, the local neighborhood. So, you know, we're looking at how that might happen, uh, but 500 to, 500,000 to $1 million is a lot of money. We could apply for more, uh, grants, park grants, things like that, but you have to do total replacements in those cases. And when we got, uh, CPC grant from, uh, for Cove, uh, the bid came in at $277,000. We were expecting to pay about $160,000 for two new courts. So we just couldn't afford it at the time. But that's the type of thing I, you know, o- over the years, I've worked closely with the CPC, we're closely looking at other grants, trying to figure out how we can, um, partner, you know, our monies with, uh, other sources and, um, continue to do that. It's just a matter of, it's a lot of money to, that, you know, a lot of needs in a short period of time.
Thank you, Mr. Doye. Any other questions? I just want to add that I didn't realize that John Peadall was hired as your assistant. Uh, he must have started as a park kid and now he's the assistant director.
Yep. We were, when, when Jocelyn moved to City Hall, we, he was one of the first guys we thought of because even when he wasn't working for us, he was coming down to the park and helping us out with special events. Uh, again, his heart never left Lynch Park and now he lives across the street and he's working there. So, um, you know, he's a great resource and, you know, again, I just love the fact that we have a lot of young professionals moving into director roles and assistant director roles in the city that are going to, you know, help us out for a long time because they're great people and they have great work ethic. And, and again, it's just great, you know, I love working with everybody that I work with because, uh, they all have the right, they have the right thing in mind when it comes to work ethic and working hard and benefiting the community.
Great. Thanks, Bruce. Do you want to touch on the, uh, enterprise fund?
Sure.
Or Mr. Ailes can?
Yeah, nothing really has changed. Uh, again, my big question marks on here, you know, I've got a coffee in front of me are if, if we don't run some of our program, like we already had to cancel, um, most of our, if not all of our spring programming in terms of adult enrichment programs and things like that, uh, if we have to cancel the summer programming, we're going to lose a lot of revenue. You know, that's one of the reasons I've been saying for a few years that, you know, we're trying to keep a comfortable amount of money in that account for the, for a rainy day. And I think we can all agree that, you know, today's a rainy day because, um, you know, we may lose $100,000 in revenue, uh, if we can't run our summer programs. Um, we're already losing money with the, um, resident-only restriction at Lynch Park. We're probably losing, or based on last few years' revenue, $1,000 a day or more on average. Uh, so, you know, it, revenue-wise, we're going to take a hit, um, but we're hoping to be able to do what we can do. So, uh, the, not much has changed in terms of the numbers from last year, but there'll be some fluctuation bet, depending, excuse me, on what programs we run and, uh, what we can do for the rest of the year and early next year.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Doye. Um, anybody else before we wrap things up? Mr. Doye, it helps when you go last because you get fewer questions.
Sure. Everybody's tired. I'm tired. I was nodding off a couple of times, but.
That's. Well, thank you all. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all for your support. It's been great. And again, uh, continue to look forward to working with everybody.
Great. Same here. All right, Council, great meeting, great questions. We talked to a lot of people and covered a lot of topics. Um, our next budget hearing will be on Thursday, June 11th at 7:00 PM. We'll have Dr. Chirokchik from the Beverly Public Schools and we have Mike Collins from Public Services, Engineering and Public Works. And, uh, Mr. Ailes will go over some enterprise funds. Does anybody have anything else to add before we adjourn? I would ask Counselor Flaherty to adjourn the Committee on Finance and Property.
We hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries three to zero.
And I would entertain a motion to adjourn Committee of the whole.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Kent.
Ames?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Lowery?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Councilman?[1769.11]